This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome, everybody. Councilor Rest?
Thank you, President Gomez. Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council Meeting for Wednesday, December 20th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by E-Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participates in the meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until March 2025, which allows us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remote remain mute until recognized by the president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in the public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order.
Barbara.
County Denim, here. Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kozinski.
Here.
Dave Munier.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Owen Zaret.
Present.
Dan Rest.
I'm here.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the legions.
Please, your legions, tonight, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Approval of the minutes. We'll take a motion to approve the minutes of December 6, 2023.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of December 2, 2023. Any further discussion? Counselor Sarik?
Just a couple of points. During communications, I talked about an unfortunate shooting in Vermont of a couple of students. It was an issue about Islamophobia and anti-Arab violence, and I'll send you some wording about that, Barbara. And then I just also wanted to make sure that our vote on the calendar reflected the discussion of the conflict with the Jewish holiday, and I'll send you some information about that as well, if that's all right with everyone else.
Anyone else? Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Against? Abstention?
Abstain.
Do abstention? Motion passes. Public speak time. Now is the time to talk about anything that is not on the public hearing. I would recommend for those who are going to say something about Dan Rest to wait later because they're going to open public here later in the agenda, because we have a 6:15, we have a public hearing. So if you're here for Dan and you want to talk about him, but you don't have time later, you will do it now. But if you can wait, I prefer for you to wait until we open the public speak time later today in the agenda. But if anyone here, they want to say something to the council that is not related to the agenda, now is the time to do it. And please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you will give, you're going to give three minutes to talk to the council.
Okay.
And we'll, like, show you online. I'm going to let people from the, that is in person first, and then the people who is participating remote.
Okay. Thank you. I'm actually speaking on a matter, the Pleasant Street Mill District Improvement Plan. It's on the agenda, but my understanding is there will be no time for public comment at that point, so now is the time to go.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay. My name is Attorney John McLaughlin. I'm from the law firm of Green Miles Lipton on Pleasant Street in North Hampton. I represent Three Kingdoms LLC. That's the owner of the mill building at 188 Pleasant. That's the very last one to the far east of the district. It's the one near the VFW. That's the building I'm talking about, okay? We are in favor of improving access, improving safety, and we think this plan does a good job towards going that way. We do want to, and I will work with Mr. Bag in the planning department and the other players to try to get a plan that will work for everybody. We do have some issues with the existing plan. First off, it says at some points it's the final plan. It's my understanding that this is just the final conceptual plan and that there are many details to be worked out. And I just wanted to bring some things to mind beforehand. We think that the current plan has, restricts access to my client's building. There's with parking that hopefully we can work on a way around that. We don't want to make it so that it's going to be difficult to do a big improvement to this building. I don't know if you know this building. This is, it's a gem. It's architecturally beautiful. It has wonderful views of the water, but it hasn't been worked on in a long time, unlike the other buildings. So it is primed for development. So what we shouldn't do is, you know, short-sighted parking arrangements or things like that. We should at least leave this building in a manner where it can be used for another great piece of this district, because it can be that. It's going to happen. We don't know what the development will be. People are talking to us. People are talking to us about residential, maybe even affordable housing. But those things will need parking. Those things will need access. And if we do something like that, it would be good to have such an element in the district. And, but we can't impinge on this building such with this new plan so that that future development would be hindered. So that's what we're just asking people to keep that in mind as we go forward. The other thing is that I don't, people realize that if you look at the plans, this building, much of it's going to be torn down. There's a 20th century element to this building, which is very different in style and architectural features than the real mill-type building. And that's being called for to tear down. And we're just starting discussions with that. It's the portion of the building that contains much of the utilities, much of the plumbing. So, I mean, that is something we have to work with, but we just want to make sure that everyone's aware that there are some issues. We are a player. We want to work with everybody, but we just hope that the final, real final plan lets us keep this building in a manner that it can be developed so that it will fit in well with the rest of the buildings. Oh, timing.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Bundy? You're muted.
Clueless. There. Now you can start the clock. So, first of all, Dan, I didn't come here for you, but boy, you're fantastic, and I just want to have that out there. I'm not going to be there for the later part, but I'm a huge fan, and I'm incredibly grateful for everything you've done for the city. So, but I am here about the later presentation that VHB is going to be, and Attorney McLaughlin just talked to that. I am so happy this plan has been done. It's a really huge benefit to the Mill District. I mean, I was, before I knew that Dan was, was, was really the key important event tonight, I was going to be talking about how, you know, I'm happy to report that Logo Burger is going to be opening up in January in the building, but also a shout-out to Tip Top, the wine store in the back, and also Little Truck. And there is, it's a sign of the, the level of activity that is even more than what we've known from the Mill District that's coming our way. And this traffic study, this sort of how we get there, addresses so many key issues and makes really hard choices. I mean, you can hear Attorney McLaughlin talking about there are a lot of hard choices here. But ultimately, what makes me really happy about it is it shows a way for us to think about the Mill District as not just a car place, but a pedestrian place, a place for bikes, a place for people to come and go in a way that will dramatically change how the businesses develop and how they function in what is becoming a very vital neighborhood behind, behind our Mill District. So hats off to VHB. Luke, I'm sorry I'm going to miss your presentation, but really, really good stuff being done here. Great conceptual plans. Final is final in that this part of the project is done, and there's a lot of good things to work with here. So I just want to applaud, applaud the effort. I want to give another shout-out to Jeff, Jeff Bag, and all the work he's done. And I want to give a side note that I've had a consultant working with me for the last couple of years, a guy named Andy Scott, and, and he and I both thought this was really, really important thing to proceed on, and, and we're glad that the city felt the same way. We're glad they worked with us to try and figure out how to move this forward, because what, what our motto here is, in my building, is it's, it's, it's Chest East Works, it's the Mill District, it's East Hampton, and if you can't integrate all those things, no one's going to be successful. So again, many thanks to all the efforts that brought this here, and I'm, I'm sorry I'm going to miss the presentation, and I think I'm probably at the end of my three minutes. Good going, Dan. Catch you guys later.
Thank you. Eddie?
Hello, everyone. I'm Eddie Comedy. I live in the Mill District. Part of the East Hampton Skate Park Committee, currently working on a project to get a skate park built in the city of East Hampton. I had the pleasure of attending the planning board meeting regarding the Mill District expansion back in the middle of the summer. There seemed to be overwhelming support, including a skate park in this project, one way or another. So hopefully we can, we can work that out and get something going in the future. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. I will twist a little bit the agenda tonight, because at the end we're going to have the public speak time at the end for Counselor Rest. Now I want to move to correspondence announcement for the president and the vice president. We had the revised 2024 meeting calendar. I don't know if all the councils take a look before the meeting, but I will take a motion to approve the calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2024 City Council Calendar. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
Yep, that's okay. Counselor Riley. So I just wanted to, you know, provide a, a couple of comments about this. So, you know, when I, when I sat through all of the, you know, testimony that the public gave to us during the anti-Semitism resolution, I really took to heart what everybody said, and I, and I wanted to be a better advocate for the Jewish community. And, you know, I think going forward in future years, that I, my hope is that we move our government beyond just diversity and into inclusion and equity, that it becomes the responsibility of all of us to look at the calendar and to determine when we think scheduling meetings may or may not be offensive to certain members of our community. This is an easy task to do, and I, I think, you know, understanding that we can't control the external influences in the world that make Jewish people feel unsafe, this is a thing that we can do that's an easy task that's meaningful. So my hope is going forward that we don't rely on, you know, Jewish members of the council or queer members of the council to have to advocate for these things. We should all kind of understand who we are collectively and work towards that. So I think that this is a really great alternative. It doesn't actually tinker with our schedule too much. So I thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other counsel? Counselor Sarik?
Just really quickly, you know, as you know, I mentioned this at the last meeting, and we kind of agreed that we would let the calendar sit as it was with a future solution. I really want to thank Counselor Riley for coming up with one pretty rapidly, within 24 hours. And then I was able to get around to meeting with the clerk who reviewed these, this recommendation, which we're going to vote on tonight, and then forward that to the council president, who agreed that we could add it on as a late agenda item. So I wanted to thank everybody. This is a complicated thing. A lot of people aren't fully educated about a multitude of other faiths and cultures that might have conflicts with our, with our calendar of meetings. In this case, it's a Jewish high holiday. That's a day of rest, and that's why I'd requested that we move it. But there's a multitude of other cultures and faiths that may interface with the city, who might not appreciate that we scheduled meetings on certain days. And so to that end, I had a very productive meeting yesterday. I think that was yesterday. Today's Wednesday. Yesterday, with the Jewish Federation of Western Massachusetts and the ADL about this topic, because clearly the goal here is to develop a deeper understanding of a multitude of cultures. So working with local faith leaders in the region and these two organizations and potentially other stakeholders, we're going to develop a toolkit, not just for East Hampton, but for Massachusetts, to better understand where there may be conflicts, what different holidays are, which ones might hold higher or lower significance for people, so that we can take a deeper dive into sensitivity and inclusion of other cultures and faiths. So I appreciate the fact that this made me think a little bit more about that from the perspective of how can we, how can we improve ourselves on this and how can we educate better? So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sarik. Any other counselor? I just want to, for clarification and to transparency, our city clerk sent an email two weeks before the last Wednesday meeting, and counsel have the opportunity to review the calendar. I, we're open to discuss every religion and culture and being inclusive, but I have to give it a credit to our efficient city clerk, that she do what she was supposed to do, and you just want to be transparent with that. For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention?
Abstain.
Motion pass. If we want to abstain. Mr. Rest. I don't know why, but I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to open a public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. For those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Counselor Rest?
Thank you. I got it. Find it now. We have the usual interdepartmental transfer. Every quarter, we have to take money from the revenue account for the PEG Access, and this is all about cable franchise agreement and move it into the expense account. So we've done this every quarter for this term. So are there any questions? This is pretty simple.
Before, because it's a public hearing. Any counsel have any questions or comments? Seeing none. Anyone for the public have any questions or comment about this transfer? Seeing none. Counselor Rest?
I move the full council approve an interdepartmental transfer. The amount requested is $50,216.40 to be transferred from the PEG Access account, $50,0216.40, to be transferred to the PEG Access account, $50,0216.40, for the purpose of giving approval to spend from the PEG Access receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes, consistent with the franchise agreement. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the interdepartmental transfer of $50,216.40 to the PEG Access account to be used for the cable-related purpose. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention? Motion passes. Communication for elected officials, boards, and committee. Now, we have the presentation from the planning department. Jeff, you want to add something before Luke? Take it, or you? We're going to do it now.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Bag. I'm the planning director here in East Hampton, and I'm very grateful to have the time to do this presentation. Our partners, VHB and Mass Development, were integral, along with the mayor's support, and obviously, as some of the other previous speakers spoke, we have had a lot of consultation with property owners throughout this process. So to take, hopefully, just two minutes to give a brief introduction, and then Luke Mitchell will go through the actual presentation. Just going back a little ways to 2002 is really the first time that the city actually had a vision or a plan for the Mill District, and that was a cooperative experience amongst the property owners at that time. And if you look at that plan, we have a big map. It's quite amazing how many things have actually been accomplished to help revitalize that whole area. And so through time, I'll just hit a couple of quick milestones, but 2008 was when Millside Park started to get renovated and created into kind of like the current status that it's in now. 2012, 2014, and 2015 were huge for the city in that area. During that time, there was about $8 million worth of grants, public infrastructure dollars that were given to the city to, to create the back of the mills as we kind of see them today. So that was in two big phases. There were the utilities, were all ancient and old, and there was wires crossing, and sewer lines were crossing each other, and no one knew what was what. So the, the first grant was $2.75 million to organize all that and redo all the infrastructure in the back, the underground stuff. And then in 2014, the city was awarded $4.5 million to finish that. So that's what you see today, the parking area, the retaining walls, the crosswalks, and, and that sort of infrastructure work was, this, what we see today was the, with the hope. And I think what we see is that it actually surpassed people's expectations. And now we have, like, what is really a thriving area. And as we look now, the, the ways that you get in and out of the back of the mills was, was never finished. And so that's part of this plan is to, to find a way to sort of finish that product, because now it's unsafe for pedestrians to get from Pleasant Street to the back. It's actually unsafe for cars, and it's unsafe for the people who are in the back of the mills now, now more than ever. So 2018 to 2020, we, you know, and before that, we saw a lot of growth, and a lot of great things are happening. We hit the pandemic. In 2021, we got funds, and a lot of other communities did a local rapid recovery plan. And the Mill District was highlighted as a really important area for us to focus on and do improvements to continue to support the growth. And then we applied for funds through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we were lucky to get that. It's a super competitive program, and it's administered from Mass Development. And so that's kind of what we see today, is the state's funding sources put projects on a continuum. So it's planning work, so it's coming up with a vision and a, and a common goal, and then it's preparing information and plans and data to, to be ready, and then it's implementation. So we're, we finished the planning work, and the prep is sort of these design plans that you're going to see, sort of 25% designs for the entrances, and that really queues us up to be eligible to actually apply for a couple million dollars to actually fix these entrances. So we wanted to work in a presentation to council, because you guys are going to be really important to help implement this. So things like easements are going to be a real important aspect of this project, where we get a public-private partnership. We need to have easements. There's going to be some legal issues. There, there might be takings. There might be this discussion of eminent domain, and that's all going to be run through city council. So Luke's going to go on the, the more fun parts, but I want to give that overview. So I'm going to stop and hand it over to Luke.
Thank you. Luke?
Thank you. Let me see if I can share my screen here. Please let me know if you can see this.
Yes, it's working.
Okay. Excellent. So thank you, Jeff. And I also want to say thank you and hello to Ben Murphy, who's on the call from Mass Development. We, obviously, none of this would have taken place without Mass Development's support. This is being done through the site readiness program, which is a really great program, if you're not aware of it, that, you know, takes opportunity sites throughout the state and helps move it to the next level. And thanks, Jeff, for providing that, the history of the, of these buildings. It's a fascinating history, and I think it's an amazing case study in how to take older industrial properties and make them, fill them with uses and make them a vibrant place. There are some examples of that happening in New England. I would say there are probably a whole lot more examples where people want that to happen, but it hasn't happened. So the fact that you, that, that the community and the owners of the building have been able to transform this area from what it was to what it is now is, is really fantastic. So it was great for us to, to get to know the site and talk about the, the next phase of, of growth and development. But yeah, we, we worked closely with the city and with Mass Development to explore existing conditions and determine a path forward for future development, wayfinding and placemaking efforts. Jeff talked about the safety of pedestrians and vehicles accessing the rear parking lots. It is unsafe currently. It's also quite confusing for people who don't really know this area to, to know where they're going and, and where they're trying to get to. So wayfinding was a big piece of this, helping visitors, meaning residents, shoppers, people going to the park, anybody accessing this area, help them figure out where they're trying to go, and, and also make it more sort of warm and attractive and welcoming for people on bike or on foot. This is a look at our process. So we started in March. We took a tour of the site with Jeff and others from, from the city. We met with, with some stakeholders, including the owners of the buildings, as well as some of the major tenants, which was really interesting to, to get everybody's shared perspective. I was impressed right away at the collaborative sort of milieu that, that people, that, that the stakeholders have in connection with this area. So we started in March, and then in the spring, we conducted a public meeting. You can see the photo in the upper right there. We had a really good showing from the community and just talked about the existing conditions and some of the major issues that we had identified, including safety and visual aesthetic appearance and, and other things, and got people's great feedback. A lot of the ideas that you'll see, that I'll present in a few slides, came out of our discussions with, with people who live in the area. So that was great and appreciated. In June, July, August, so over the course of the summer, we basically developed concept plans. So to the discussion earlier about how final these plans are, I, I think Will said it right, that this is the end of this part of the process, but it's, but the, but the drawings are, are not final, in that they, those won't, certainly won't be sent to a construction team anytime soon. Really, the, the spirit of this assignment was to, in one document, enumerate all the different improvements that we think would, would make sense for the mill in order to evolve to that next level that we've been talking about. So concept plans really illustrate what those improvements could and should look like, where they'd be located, and what they consist of. For any of these improvements, when, if and when they do move forward, each one of them is going to be designed in much greater detail than they've been designed today. So that's what we worked on over the course of the summer. In the fall, we, we met with folks again at an event in the park, which was really great. A lot of people stopped by, shared some more ideas, which were really helpful. And then, so currently, we're, we're working to finalize this report. We can submit it to, to Jeff and to the city and to Mass Development, and then talk about the next steps. So here are the goals that we identified pretty early on in the process. One is to reimagine the flow of traffic. Right now, it's, there are some inefficiencies and some unsafe spots that, that we were hoping to address. Second is to enhance the pedestrian experience. Currently, if you know this area, you know that walking, that traversing through the parking lot is not necessarily a comfortable experience. There's no designated space for pedestrians. So essentially, you're walking through the middle of the parking lot for, for most of the, most of the area behind the mill. So we, we wanted to address that. Third, encourage gathering. You already have some really great gatherings that take place in this area, including when the food trucks come, including Mill Pond Live and different festivals that take place. So we wanted to build on that energy and formalize it. So we wanted to build on that energy and formalize it, find out which locations make the most sense for those gatherings of people, and really emphasize that through placemaking, through pavers and lighting and things like that. Four, enhance connectivity, which sounds kind of general, but that's, that's really about, you know, making sure that people know where they're going, and, and no matter what their mode of transportation is, they can get to where they need to go. Fifth is to showcase public art. There's to, you know, I think this is really just a, a great, a great location for public art. And there's so many different moments within this space that we feel would be great for murals, large public sculpture, something to help, you know, celebrate the site's history, and also make it more of a destination. Six is to upgrade the wayfinding, as I mentioned earlier. And then last is to improve internal coordination between the city and the mill owners. It's already a great esprit de corps. People are already sharing ideas and getting together. So again, it's about formalizing that through partnerships and relationships and memorandums of understanding and things like that, so we can get to that. So just to go through one piece at a time, I know I only have a few minutes, so I'll try not to get lost in the details. But we really looked closely at the three entrances and a few thoughts on that here. So if you look at the Western Entrance, some issues, poor signage and wayfinding, no sidewalks or bike lanes, poor lighting. There's an unused security gate that's something of an eyesore and a public safety hazard. There's a catwalk that you, that you might know, you drive under the catwalk. It's, it's arguably an eyesore. It's also based on what we heard, an obstacle to trucks that need to drop off goods. People think they won't, they won't be able to go under the catwalk, so they end up turning around, going in the other entrance, stuff like that. So not, and, and it's currently not being used by the owners. So, and then lastly, poor maneuvering for trucks. If you, you can see on this aerial right in the middle of the circle, you have a lot of asphalt, but there's not a lot of programming going on in the asphalt, not a lot of striping or lanes or signage or anything like that. So again, we wanted to formalize what the activity that takes place there. Here's a 3D rendering of that space. Again, it's the Western Entrance called Putnam Court, and this is the existing conditions. And then here is a sort of snapshot of the proposed improvements. So just a few things to call out. One is a pedestrian connection to Pleasant Street. I don't know if you guys can see my mouse, but basically, the idea is let's put a dedicated pedestrian lane coming from Pleasant Street all the way down back to the, to this parking lot. Currently, there's none. So this is a sketch of where we think that could be located. And again, you can articulate that and show it to people through the choice of pavers. So maybe it's a beige concrete paver versus the black of the asphalt next to it. And then signage to accompany that, along with the lighting that you can see here arrayed along the pedestrian connection. Array, and then you might see in red in the middle of the screen, something labeled the raised crosswalk. The idea there is, there's, you see, you have the Manhan Trail, which by the way is a great asset. We love it. We love that it's positioned right here. How do people coming in from the Manhan Trail connect to the, to the sidewalk? So the idea here is let's put a nice raised crosswalk that'll achieve two things. It'll help pedestrians and bicyclists get to where they're going, and it will also slow down traffic because it's a raised crosswalk, and people will get, drivers will understand that it's time to slow down. They're entering a shared zone. Also, some screening fence and vegetation, that's to sort of visually put a barrier in between the loading that's taking place and the more pedestrian-friendly areas. And then this is a big-ticket item here in the lower right, but just to point it out, the idea is to add a pedestrian bridge to New City. This has been something that, that's been talked about in the community for a while. We think it's an excellent idea. It can really help placemaking, and it'll look, it could look great if done right, and it can, and it can increase pedestrian activity. Here's, again, I'll, I'll try to hurry up, sorry. This is an engineered plan that, that we'll be submitting, 25% engineering drawings for Putnam Court that accomplishes a few things for the owners and for pedestrians and for visitors. So looking at the Central Entrance, currently, this is used as, as for one-way traffic. You can go one way or the other way. You can't go both ways at the same time. It's, it only allows for one direction. What we realized pretty, pretty quickly is that this entrance is not needed for vehicles. There's a, vehicles can come in down in the Western End, they can come in down in the Eastern End. It's difficult, it's unsafe here in the center. So our thought was, let's flip this into a pedestrian entrance. Nice pavers, nice lighting, placemaking, murals, public art. This can be a great pedestrian gateway to the, to the back of the mill area. So that, that's really the concept that you can see illustrated here. Here's the existing conditions, and here's the proposed. Turn it into a nice pedestrian corridor. People can come in, you can have events there, food trucks can be parked nearby. It create, it, it really even enhances the potential for the small building that you see located in the middle to become a bar or a restaurant or cafe. And then again, it punches a new hole through the, through the retention wall down at the bottom, opening up a new entrance to the, to the trail and, and really creating a nice centrality and sense of place to that area. And then here's the 25% engineering drawings for that, which we'll submit to the city. Lastly, down at the Eastern End, so this is near the VFW. Thanks for the comments earlier from the attorney. We'll take those to heart. You know, this is an important entrance. It's perceived as very unsafe by a lot of pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers. Here's the existing conditions. Here's a snapshot of proposed conditions. So this, this doesn't get too deep into that entrance sequence near Three Kingdoms, but it does show that we've incorporated the skate park to the earlier comments into the, into the plan, as well as a new kid-friendly playground, and some charging stations. You can see up top, raised crosswalk, wayfinding and signage. Basically, take this park that's already a great asset to the community, make it even stronger. Space for skateboarding and rollerblading and trick biking could be a really excellent thing, and there's some, we've met some people in the community, including the gentleman who spoke earlier, who are so committed to this idea. I really respect that. I've seen skate parks do great things for parks across the state, so I think it's a great idea. And then just moving along, here's the 25% engineered plan for that Eastern Entrance that gets at some of those issues mentioned earlier, just trying to make it safer for everybody. And there's been some comments about the existing building. How can we make sure that, that those, the operations of the building can continue and even be improved? So 100%, that's an important part of it to us as, as well as the owners. So thanks to everybody, thanks to, you know, to Jeff and to Mass Development, but also thanks to the mill owners. Everybody we spoke with was so cooperative, had great ideas, and really contributed a lot, and again, demonstrated a spirit of let's all do this together. So we look forward to continuing to speak about next steps with, with Jeff and with the city.
Thank you, Luke. Just for the council, this is just for information. Were you allowed to ask anything today? But I, again, I just want to remind that this is just for information. It's a potential, they're, they're going to change a few things in the process. If any council have a question or comment, now is the time to do it. Or no, just wait until we got the...
Just one quick...
Mr. O'Reilly?
Yeah, just one quick comment is, you know, I think one of the joys of being a city councillor in a city like East Hampton is to be able to watch dreamers and creators reimagine what our city can look like and how it comes to life, and I've been able to see that happen just in my short time on the council. So I'm really excited to see where this goes, and I thank you to everyone that was involved in the process.
Thank you. Now, we're going to start with the report of standing committees. We're going to hold the major's communications and the police speak time to the end. Finance Councillor Rest.
My last finance report. Yay. I just wanted to say, I am very grateful to Hedo Patel and Jessica Hebert, our treasurer. During our meeting, which we had last week, we had a report which indicates, it hasn't been finalized yet, but just for all of the people listening and all of you in the room, our revenues last fiscal year exceeded expenses. Our revenue was 197% above estimate, or 2.5 million over estimated revenues. And enterprise, that's water and sewer, 104%, or 182,000 over estimate. Expenses in both funds were only 94%. So you do the math, we're in a good place. Free cash will be certified in the spring, so there's a little delay in that. The other thing to say is that I am very proud of the fact that over the years, our mayor and our finance team have put a great deal of funds into our stabilization accounts. Those accounts include what many might say are rainy day funds. There is almost $6 million in general stabilization, almost $4 million in capital stabilization. What does this mean? It means a top bond rating, so when we have to finish our borrowing for the school, we save a lot of taxpayer funds. So I leave you on the finance committee with the thought that we're in pretty good shape. Now, the other thing we talked about and we approved 3 to 0 was accepting Chapter 41-108P. Just to review it, councillors, this is a small stipend that's given to a collector or treasurer who has completed necessary courses of study and training and has been awarded a certificate by the Massachusetts Collectors and Treasurers Association. It can't exceed $1,000. But this stipend will be available to any future treasurer or collector who happens to pass those courses of study. Our current treasurer does. So we voted 3 to 0, and if it's all right with the president, I'll make a motion. I move that the city council accept Chapter 41, Section 108P, additional compensation for collectors and treasurers.
I have a motion in a second to accept MGL Chapter 41, Section 108P. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. Councillor Rest.
I just want to conclude by thanking my fellow councillors, Councillor Peak and Councillor Denham. You really made it easy for me to be a chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Rest. Public Safety, Councillor Sarret.
Thank you, Mr. President. Not much to report. We have not met since the last meeting, just a couple items of housekeeping to the city clerk. Our clerk was timely with minutes, but it seems like there was issues getting them to you. I have them. I'm off for the first time in, I don't know how long, next week, so I will go through all of those and get them to you. I think there was one meeting that Councillor Derby clerked, and I have those minutes as well, so you'll have those. Also, I wanted to thank the council and the members of the committee for the opportunity to chair this term, Councillors Munier and Derby. And thank you, Councillor Munier, for, again, your timely minutes. And thank you to our former chair, Councillor Gomez. I think the quarterly review of public safety departments was an invaluable addition to this committee, and I think it really amplified our ability to not only be transparent, but to let the public engage with the work that our public safety departments do, so thank you. We have one item that needs to be extended. It's the Ordinance Review Committee final report. There's still some logistics that are being worked out with those items. I'd like to request a 90-day extension at this time in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to extend for 90 days the Ordinance Review Committee final report. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes.
And we don't have anything else scheduled, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Sarret. Appointments, Councillor O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we actually met earlier today to approve two mayoral reappointments. I think you all know both of these folks really well, so I don't feel the need to go into very many details on their credentials. So we had the reappointment of Paul Nowak to the Nashwannic Pond Committee and Harry Schuman to the Planning Board. Both had term expiration dates of December 31, 2026, and we voted 3-0 to approve, or to recommend those reappointments.
Motion.
So if there are no questions, I move to approve Paul Nowak to the Nashwannic Pond Committee and Harry Schuman to the Planning Board with a term expiration date of December 31, 2026.
Second. I have a motion in a second to, for those to reappointments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. Councillor O'Reilly?
Thank you. And then just a, a quick note, you know, over the last two years being on the Appointments Committee, I have seen a remarkable number of people who have volunteered to serve the city of East Hampton across all different, you know, boards and committees and commissions. And I just want to say that if it were not for all of you who volunteered to do this work, we could not be as effective as we are as city councillors. So I thank you to everyone who continues to serve the city. We will have new business before us, but I think it would probably be best to schedule that meeting at the beginning of the new term, so thus concludes.
Thank you, Councillor O'Reilly. Ordinance, Councillor Derby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance Committee met Monday, the 11th. We discussed the review of the LED sign and electronic messaging center ordinance. We reviewed some suggestions to bring it into a more modern version. We agreed on those. And so at this time, I would like to make a motion to send that item back to the Ordinance Committee and also to send it to the Planning Board, and that's in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to send the LED sign, electronic message center sign ordinance to the Ordinance Committee and to the Planning Board. Any further discussion? Seeing none, for those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstentions, motion passes.
And just for clarification, you know, in the new year, when all the committees are set, a joint public hearing will be set with the Planning Board where they can review it, give some feedback, and it will go back into committee where it can, a final version can be brought back to the full council for a public hearing. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. Thus concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Derby. Property, Councillor Kuzinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one matter before us that, unfortunately, the EverSource representative was unable to meet with us this year, so that will be part of next year's committee work. And I did manage, their schedule is amazing, but we were able to set January 8th as a possible day, should that meet with the future property committee for the four poles that are new and the four poles that will be relocated at Loudville Road near Drury Lane. That's a lot of poles, I mean, quite a few. So it's not like, okay, well, one, one, one place. It's, it's kind of a meeting that I think is important, everybody should kind of pay attention to, and I do hope we can have good neighbor participation and input for that. This concludes, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Kuzinski. Rules, Councillor Rest.
Yes, we met this evening to approve our last minutes from the last meeting. I just want to thank my fellow councillors, Councillor Denham and Councillor Kuzinski for being on this Rules and Government Relations Committee. I thank you for putting up, up my chairmanship. That concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Rest. All business, the, Councillor Denham, you want to keep it there until next term? Thank you. For new business, that's going to do, let's do the new business now.
Okay, I'm doing a new business because two of them are finance. The first is to move to the Appointments Committee, the appointment of Kira Henninger to the Parks and Recreation Commission. That's a, that's a motion.
I have a motion in a second to move the mayor's appointment to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. Councillor Rest.
I will make a first reading of finance transfers. We have an interdepartmental transfer of $6,075 to be transferred to assessors' administrative assistance salaries, to be transferred to IT software account for the following purpose: to subscribe a web-based application, NERMAP, that provides high-resolution, up-to-date aerial maps to be integrated with our current CAI mapping system. That's the first one. The second interdepartmental transfer is for $150 to be transferred from the Board of Health Professional Services, to be transferred to the Board of Health Professional Services Account 150, to provide vote to pay... Account 150, to provide vote to pay prior fiscal year bill for inspection services out of current fiscal year. This will cover an invoice for services by Bree Duprah on 6/24/2023 for the Thunder in the Valley event. I move that these be sent to the Finance Committee for review, as well as a public hearing be set for the second meeting in January.
Second.
I have a motion on a second to send to the Finance Committee and to schedule a public hearing for the second meeting next month at 6:15 in December to the Finance Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, those who are in favor?
Aye.
Any against, abstention, motion passes. Thank you. Now, Mayor's Communication.
Here we go.
Now is the time for everybody was waiting.
So we, Corinne, our IT director, and I kind of got excited about a new tool we found on the internet. It's AI. And we decided that we would write an ode to City Councilor Dan Rist, and it is read into the public record on December 20th of year 2023 in the city of East Hampton City Council chambers. I've signed this, not as the author, but as mayor, and then we'll put it back on the easel after I'm done, and we're asking everyone to sign, if they'd like to, a little message or just their name on this, and then we'll encase it in glass. And, no, Dan, this was not done with public funds, a computer. I don't need an appropriation in January.
Just remember, AI can replace you.
I guess. Come at it. Tell me where to give him the phone. I'm in. In the public realm where voices rise amid the fet fever and the cries, where the tides of change do roll, Dan's election stirred the city's soul. City Council, a tapestry of minds with diverse whispers that intertwine, a symphony of debate and discourse guiding the city's steady course. Public servants, hearts devoted in earnest service, deeply devoted. Dan always walked the path of conviction to shape East Hampton into a better jurisdiction. Leadership, Dan's most elusive art, a force to bind a city's heart, guided by vision, wisdom, and grace to navigate the challenges he and we all bravely faced. City Space, where Dan saw a haven for dreams, a meeting ground where passion teams, a space alive with vibrant creation, igniting voices and fueling inspiration. As a chairperson, a role of might, Dan's knowledge and strength shine bright. Lead with fearlessness and foresight to shape tomorrow with pure light. History, the lessons of the past, whispers of time that forever last. Dan's public tapestry that weaves our story, influencing our past, present, and future with glory. Innovation, where dreams unfold, a realm of possibilities untold. With sparks that light in the dark unknown, he ignited minds that dared to become culturally renowned. Oh, East Hampton of beauty and ambition, let us nurture Dan's long-sighted and collected splendid vision. We embrace his passion within our civic core as our city journeys on forevermore. Signed by the mayor of East Hampton on December 20, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, the public. Now is the time, if you came here to say something about Dan, now is the time to do it. Can you please go to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you three minutes.
Not a second more. Put it in. No, I'll go first. You're the past president. Put McCoy right here.
Wow.
Joe, right here.
We're ready.
Good for presidents.
My name is Morgan Mitchell. I'm the first representing the former presidents of the council. Thank you, President Gomez, for allowing us to be here. Councilor Rist. Past President Loomis sends his best wishes to you and your council, and regrets not being here tonight, because tonight, it truly is your council. You served upon this stage where all men and women are merely players. They have their entrances and their exits, and you, in your time, played many parts, Consulor, Chairman, Vice President, and President, and we thank you for your service. But let Councilor Rist not be judged by who he is here, but by who he is outside these walls. A grandson, a son, a husband, a father, and a grandfather. You've served all these with dignity and honor. So Dan, let me say to you in closing, may the road rise up to meet you, may the wind always be at your back, may the sun shine warm upon your face, the rains fall soft upon your fields, and until we meet again, may God hold you in the palm of his hand. Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
We have to say our name and address, please. Joe McCoy, Glenclap Street. I'd like to also, among all these amazing people, give my thoughts on Dan and his incredible tenure. I had my speech memorized, it's two minutes and 59 seconds, but I'll try to keep it less than that. But I think the most amazing thing for me is just the time of your tenure, and not only just the amount of physical years, but what you have seen the city transform into. I mean, literally from a town to a city, and with Mayor Tausnick and with the initial first council, to have that incredible vision of the renaissance of East Hampton is just truly remarkable, and being able to move it forward through the council with the help of all these other great people. But also that, just your ability to kind of traverse the amazing changes in East Hampton. I mean, everything from literally physical changes in our city to everything from demographics and political makeup, and your ability to walk that line for all these years is truly remarkable and admirable. And I think what it comes down to is your ability to listen to the constituents and your moral compass. So thank you and Patty for your amazing years, and take care.
Thank you.
Buckle up.
Too late.
My name is Peg Hanaf. I stand before you tonight to honor a man who has given 28 years of his life and just about every Wednesday of every week, most Tuesdays, some Mondays, and a bunch of Thursdays in service to the community he so dearly loves. As part of the newly formed government in East Hampton in 1996, Dan Rist was elected to City Council. He has been elected and reelected 14 times. He currently serves as Chair of the Finance Committee, Chair of the Rules Committee, Rules and Government Relations Committee, excuse me, and Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. His devotion to East Hampton is legendary and unmatched. While he is saying goodbye to City Council, I am confident he will continue to contribute in ways to, in his words, make a difference. As a city councillor myself for six years, one of the first connections I made was with Dan. He has been a mentor, an ally, a cheerleader, and a sparring partner, in case anyone thought we got along all the time. Most importantly, he's been a friend since that first time. During the difficult year of the pandemic, Dan was one of those people whose advice I trusted the most. As my vice president, he guided me as a first-time president with not-so-subtle suggestions. He reminded me in every meeting where we were on the agenda that a motion was on the table, that we had to ask for a vote, that we had to open the public hearing, that we had to close the public hearing. Because meetings during the entirety of that term were on Zoom, I did not have the joy of hearing him whisper these stage directions to me directly. As a retired technical director at Smith College, Dan cannot help but give stage directions. I will forever miss that. Dan is as passionate about issues put before the council as he is humble about his accomplishments. The city of East Hampton is so lucky to have had Dan Rist protecting the legacy of the past while advocating for responsible change and sustainable growth for the future. As for me personally, I have enormous gratitude to have worked with Dan on the City Council and look forward to commiserating with him at the Silver Spoon about all things East Hampton, our respective retirement plans, and the many and varied travel destinations that we plan to talk about. Thank you, Dan, for your friendship, for your support, and for your commitment to this community. You will be sorely missed.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, Dan.
I know.
So I'm going to share how you've impacted me as a person through my entire life. East Hampton was incorporated in 1785. It was a town from 1809 to 1996, and that's when we became a city. I was in the eighth grade at the start of 96. I graduated from EHS in 2000. Our town was a lot different back then, a lot different. What changed over those last 27 years that turned this city into what it's become today? The leaders, the leaders that have led this city to where we are. All of you sitting here today, I thank you for your time. We've had three mayors along the way. I thank them as well. But there's one person that served this city for every one of those years, Councilor Rist. You've helped build this city. You have been a part of so many things over the years, and you have developed this city to what it is today, helping create the master plan, watching it come to life, the charter, the revisions, the bylaw changes, everything. We, as a community, owe you a lot. I have known you almost my whole life. I went to NDIC with Matt. I remember driving down Plain Street on my bicycle and coming swimming over your house when I was a kid. I had the honor of serving with you on council, and I appreciate all your mentorship that you gave me. My first City Council experience was when I was a freshman in high school. A group of friends and I went in front of the council to share the importance of a skate park to be installed in the memory of our friend David. You and the leaders of the city at the time helped us make that vision happen. As a teenager growing up here, you all listened to us, and that meant so much. Dan, you have, if you haven't already, do yourself a favor, take a step back in time and look at everything that you have changed and been a part of since you've been in office, the bike path, the boardwalks, the eastworks, the mills, the schools, the expansion of the park and the soccer fields, the countless CPA projects, and on and on and on. You always shared your knowledge with the new councilors and helped me when I was in finance together with you. We may not have agreed on everything, but you always listened. You always listened to your constituents and made the best educated decision. All of your hard work and collaboration with our leaders has turned East Hampton into what we are proud to raise our family in. I thank you for the many years of service, and congratulations on your retiring. I hope you enjoy it with your family. Thank you, Dan.
You, I just, I wanted to come and thank you personally for being you. When I think about words, I think about you as kind, I think about you as pragmatic. I think about you as loving East Hampton, and as Bill said and other people mentioned, you are a great mentor. When I was new in the council, you were always there to answer questions, to help educate me about the process. But not only that, you ask questions, and you were always willing to learn more, and I always will remember that. You also do not shy away from hard topics, and I appreciate that. You always showed courage, and I just wanted to say I appreciate you and good luck on your next chapter.
We're coming as a set. Jackie Russo Ferreira, 39, Garfield Ave.
Six minutes.
There we go.
I'm Janet Tedrow. I live 52 Pomeroy Street in Precinct 5.
And Janet and I have been on the East Hampton Housing Fair and Affordable Housing Partnership since it began, and every time we come to support an affordable housing project in front of CPA, in front of the City Council, in front of all the places that they go, we know that you're the ally, who's always there, always speaking up for affordable housing. It's a really huge loss for us in some ways, but we're so grateful for all the work that you've done to help move so many affordable housing projects forward in the city of East Hampton.
And there's always a vacancy.
There you go.
Feel like you need some time, you know, at the Thor Thursday of every month.
Please, come join.
But yes, we really appreciate all of your support. Right now, we are in a fortunate position where our City Council cares about affordable housing, and the city has been, is talking about affordable housing, but that has not always been the case, as you know, and so sometimes you are a lone voice supporting affordable housing, and so we really appreciate all of your support, and we will miss you.
Definitely.
I'm not going anywhere.
You know where to find us.
That's right.
Thank you. Hello, Councilor Rist. I'm Tamara Smith. I live at 103 Strong Street, and I am the councillor-elect for Precinct 5, from which you're retiring.
These are very big shoes to fill. I was not at all intimidated until tonight, listening to everything you've done. I'm like, what am I doing? But I wanted to share a couple things. When I first came on to City Council, everything is very new. It's an entirely new language, and I really felt like I was sitting next to the city council thesaurus in Dan. Every single time you speak at the microphone, you would explain things in a way that the average layperson could understand, and it made learning so much easier. One thing that you always mention, every time we would go out as a group after City Council in my last run, in here, you're all about the city. Once you leave that, it's all about your family. I have heard so many stories about all of you from your dad, and so many talks about trips that you've taken together, Pat, and just different things that has been romantic in Dan's eyes. And I feel like the gist of why you were really doing this and what you've always conveyed to me is that this is where you've lived, this is where you've raised your family, and this is where you want to continue having this place to be a center for your family. And I really found that out when you said, if you have a few signs, I have a few family members that can put them up in East Hampton. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for your mentorship over the years. Thank you for all the extra conversations you had with me explaining things like CPA funds and really, really causing me to really have to defend myself in things that are true to me. I really model my own, my own stance as a city councillor from a lot of your actions, so I just want to say thank you, and that I hope I do you proud. So thank you.
Councilor Rist, my name is Burns Maxi. We might know each other. Thank you.
Good for Matt.
Thank you. You know, one of the reasons why I live here is because East Hampton is, has had a resurgence because of the arts. The arts were a part of the master plan, and if you look at that plan, you can see all the checkboxes that are completed, not all of them, but many of them. And a lot of that has to do with you and the vision of so many people. You know, I think good leadership takes being a cheerleader, it takes being positive, it takes vision, it takes, as Tamara was saying, that extra step and explaining and calling somebody up and saying, this is what you need to do, and you do that. I'm also here on behalf of City Space and the Board of City Space, and we have a citation of appreciation for your service that we'd like to give to you. And I'll read that. It's not as poetic as mayor's, which is appropriate, but it does include City Space. And, Councilor Rist, City Space recognizes Daniel Rist for significant contributions to our city and the betterment of our residents, and recognition and sincere appreciation of outstanding service on the East Hampton Community Preservation Committee, and so many other committees, I should say, and longstanding leadership on East Hampton City Council. Daniel Rist has demonstrated selfless commitment to the community that warrants attention to the community that warrants attention and gratitude and shows true contribution and dedication to the city of East Hampton. Thank you for choosing this as your home and your place and for opening the door to so many others. Thank you.
Mike Kousnik. Dan, you, as everyone has said, you have been such an important cog in the wheels of government that the city's going to miss your involvement. But I want you to know that you've also a part of the foundation of why this works, why the community is what it is. And that's something that not very many people can hold. And I'm just so happy to have worked with you while I was here with the city and happy that I've been able to work with you in my volunteer capacity with City Space. And I want to thank you sincerely for being my precinct counselor for all of your service. Thank you.
Good evening. State Representative Dan Carey, Newell Street. Lifelong resident of East Hampton, former East Hampton City Councilor. So I had the pleasure of working with Dan because if you're a former East Hampton City Councilor, you have the pleasure of working with Dan. I also, for a time when I was on the city council, was Councilor Rist's driver.
Thank you.
And would pick him up and bring him to meetings and would bring him home. And that was a special time for me because when you are in a car with somebody, you get to know them. And I can tell you without hesitation, Councilor Rist is just as grumpy as you think he is. And I don't mean that at all. I echo the sentiments we've already heard, and we keep hearing the word mentor. And I bet you dollars to doughnuts, that word never came out of that man's mouth. He never came up to me and said, "You're the new guy. I'm going to show you how it's done. I'm your mentor. Just follow me. You're in my shadow now." That's not how the work got done. It was always little helpful hints. Here's what this means. Here's what that means. It was always known that's somebody you can go to with a question because there's always questions. There's always more to learn. A lot of people, it will surprise no one, get into elected office because they like to see their name in the newspaper. They like to see their name on lawn signs. Maybe they're angry. They've got one issue is all they care about. But the effective public servants are those who get into it for none of those reasons. But just to help out. How can I help my neighbor? How can I help my family? How can I help my community? And we've seen Councilor Rist do that, meeting after meeting, year after year. And this city is a better place for it. I'm a better councillor. I was a better councillor. I'm a better rep. I'm a better community member because of the time we've spent at that table and in my car. So we've got some citations. My friend Kevin's here from John Velis's office. Because this work should be noted. And the House of Representatives and the Massachusetts Senate want to congratulate you and want to thank you. So I've got a citation from the House of Representatives. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Dan Rist in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the city of East Hampton as a member of the city council. The entire House membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And that's signed by myself and by Speaker of the House, Ron Mariano. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Chambers, 3 Maple Street. I am here on behalf of State Senator Velis. He does wish that he could be here tonight. But unfortunately, he has COVID right now, and he tested positive this morning.
I didn't come.
And so I know that he really does wish he could be here because he certainly admires all the service you've given the city of East Hampton. If Representative Carey was going for eloquence, I'm going to go for pith. And be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Dan Rist in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the city of East Hampton as a member of the city council. Be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And this is signed by the Clerk of the Senate and President Spilka, as well as Senator Velis. So thank you again, Dan.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Somebody else?
Anybody else? Counselors?
No, wait.
This is...
You're somebody else.
Amy?
Hi. Hello, everyone. I'm Amy Rist, 15 Cottage Street. I'm so proud of my dad because he is the strength of East Hampton. I think if you thought about it, he really is. He's the strength of me and my entire family. I don't know if you know about this, but long before he was a councillor, he coached many, many children from I was three in East Hampton Lassie League for years and years, was the president of East Hampton Lassie League. He brought a tournament which brought children from across Western Mass and beyond every year to participate in sports. He raised money for a scholarship in the name of Paul Cowett. He would take our teams to Tasty Top and pay for everybody to get ice cream. He has contributed to the city from the moment we've been here, but long before he was a councillor. And I just, this is just a little thing because I wanted to do something in memory of you. The East Hampton Learning Foundation, as you know, does a lot of things for programs in our schools. So I contacted Jenny Papa George, and she very quickly helped me put together a handout that I will pass out. And we will be collecting donations for a fund that will go to a community foundation in Western Mass. And that fund will be the Dan Rist Fund and will support educational initiatives in the schools, specifically targeted to political science and theater, which are two of his passions. And we need $10,000 to get it to the community foundation. I'm sure we can do it. And that's going to be something that will be here forever. And you will make a difference in so many more lives, even though you've already made a difference in thousands and thousands already. So I'll pass this out. Right now, they're fixing the donation page so you can target your donation, but you can mail checks, and I'll give you this information to do so. Thank you, Dad, for everything you do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead. Now we're going to open again the communication for elected officials. Any councillor? Want to say something? Consular Peak, you going to start from?
Sure, I'll start. Dan, a bunch of people shared similar things, so I almost thought about not saying anything because I know you're really suffering up here.
Next, Tom.
But I wanted to tell a story because I think probably half the people on the council have heard this story, but I don't know if I've ever told it to you. So when I first ran, I had very little knowledge of local government. I'd worked in government at other levels. I thought, maybe this will translate. So I ran. No one ran against me. I ended up here. And I ended up on rules. And the first time there was a not unanimous vote on the council, it was on something that you and I disagreed on and debated on. And that debate, I remember, like, I felt very strongly about it. You felt very strongly about it. We went back and forth. And I didn't really know you at the time, so I really didn't know what to expect from all of that. And just from my broader understanding of politics, I really had a sense you were just going to hate my guts for being... I'm 29 at the time, right? And I don't have a deep background in East Hampton. And I'm here saying, well, no, I disagree with you. You've been here for decades. I was so sure you were going to hate my guts. And we debated. The vote happened. The meeting adjourned. And you came up and you were like, "You know what, Tom? You made some really, you made some good points there." That was a really, I really liked the perspective you have. Thanks for saying what you think about that. And you shook my hand, and you introduced yourself to my partner and now my wife. And just that level of graciousness and supportiveness, even when we were on other sides of a debate, it really, really struck me. I honestly think that I want... I remind myself of that a lot when we get into these moments where things can get heated and where we can disagree with each other because I was like, that's who I want to be in the future as a city councillor, as someone who can get into a debate with someone and argue vigorously, but then at the end can say, "Hey, you made some really good points." You know, move on to the next thing. And so I just, that moment really struck me. It's something that when new people came on, I've brought up a lot, that this was a moment that really shaped how I thought we should treat each other here. So thank you for that. And thank you for all of your mentorship, all the time we've spent on all these different committees. I think I've been on at least one committee with you for my whole time here. And I just really, I cannot thank you enough for everything. And I really look forward to many interesting conversations in the future.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Consular Sarret?
Thank you. You know, I've had some time to stare at the city seal while you've all been speaking. And I don't know how you did this, Dan, but if you look at the second pine tree to the right, somehow incorporated into the city seal is a tiny likeness of Dan Rist. So I moved here in 2000, and that was already at least four years into Dan's impact on the city, which at one point was a town. And Dan Rist, I'm like, what a name. It's like Rip Torn, right? It's like one of these great theatrical names, which is obviously a nod to your work in the theater industry. And I heard all these local legends like that Dan Rist had dug Nashuanak Pond by hand and then used the dirt to make Mount Tom, using CPA money, of course. 27 years. I was thinking about that. That's literally my entire adult lifetime. I think about everything I've done in that time and that, all the changes that have happened to me and the evolution of my life and how that is your entire commitment to the city, my whole adult life. 27 actually happens to be one of my favorite numbers, too. It's three cubed. I'm a big fan of perfect cubes. And I also was thinking that in the Jewish tradition, 18 is a powerful number. It's the number for life, chai. 27 is 18 and a half. You've given 18 and a half lifetimes to the city. I have four Dan Rist memories that I want to share. The first is when I was first running, the same year that Tom and Omar first ran for city council. And I was making the rounds, trying to make sure I acquainted myself with my potential future colleagues. And so I think Dan and I were playing text tag or phone tag or something like that. And I remember exactly where I was. I was in the parking lot. And I was running late for work, but my phone rang, and it was Dan. I'm like, I'm taking this call because we've been trying to talk to each other. It's very important that I talk to this man. And I picked up the phone, and I had this whole spiel prepared that I was going to tell him about like my vision for the city and what I wanted to do. And he's like, "My daughters say you're a good guy. I'm fine with that. But, I'll talk to you soon." My second Dan Rist memory was, and this actually happened twice. It's two memories, but I'm combining them into one, was standing out at the old White Brook Middle School holding signs for that first election I was involved in. And it was who knows how cold out, but I was wearing shorts and a t-shirt. And it was driving him insane. "You're going to freeze to death. What are you doing?" It was, I don't know why every time I think about that, how much it seemed to really affect you, but in this way that was clearly incredibly fatherly and that you were clearly concerned for my safety. And I think that that has translated to how I've kind of seen you throughout my time here, which leads me into my last two Dan Rist memories. So the first was, we had just introduced the agenda item to, and this was, I think, my first term in the city council, we had first introduced the first agenda item for the first time to evaluate a dog park in East Hampton, which I was very excited about. And I get this unsolicited email from Dan. And it was just so enthusiastic about the idea of that project. I can't tell you how much that meant to me to get that kind of input from you. It was kind of a seal of approval, the city seal, which includes a small likeness of Dan, of approval. And then my last memory was, I think it was my second term, and I had introduced a proposal to try to use cannabis money to offset taxes or this tax program. And it went to rules, I think, which you were on at the time. And I walked in, and it basically got dismissed immediately. And I felt like I had the carpet pulled out from under me. I was really excited for the prospect of kind of this novel thought. Then I left the meeting. I didn't really know what to think about it. And my phone rang the next morning. And who was it but Dan? Because I think you saw the look in my eyes about how upsetting that was. There was work put into that. And you counseled me. And you said you thought it was a good idea, but these things don't always work out. But that you appreciated me bringing it forward, and you also wanted to know that you were thinking about me in that moment. And I really appreciate that. Everyone's used the word mentor quite a bit. I generally feel the same. The amount of wisdom that you've imparted to me over the years has been indispensable. Hopefully, with you off the council, I still have access to that. You've given me a ton of advice You've given me a ton of advice about how to navigate the complexities of city government, both solicited, unsolicited. I am really appreciative of not only the grand amount of your tenure, but the amount of time I was able to spend with you and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Riley?
So, you know, my, my journey with public administration started in the beginning of the pandemic. And I felt like everything was hopeless. I was stuck inside and I just thought, there's so many awful things happening in the world right now. I have to do something so that way I can get through it. And, and I don't know why I decided to do this because I'd never done it before, but I started watching city council meetings. And, and of course, so I'm from a different state and, you know, where I come from, there isn't a thing like the Community Preservation Act. It doesn't exist. And I started hearing about the things that you were talking about and advocating for. And I thought, I wish that something like this and someone like that existed when I was a child, because I needed something like the Community Preservation Act and a city councillor like you so bad. And I thought, I'm just going to do this because it feels right. And I think that if there's someone like Dan Rist who's advocating for these things, then there might be a spot for me in city government as well. And so, you know, I joined the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership and, you know, it's just one thing led to another. And all of a sudden, there's these conversations happening about, you know, am I going to run for city council and what's that going to be like? And I thought, you know, I'm going to do this. This feels like the right thing to do. And two weeks after the election, I panicked because I realized I actually had no idea what the hell I was going to do. I didn't actually know how to be a city councillor and nobody really knows how to be a city councillor until they actually become one. And so I watched you. I watched the way that you tell the stories about why something is important or why a policy or a procedure exists the way that it does. And, you know, I think so many people who are former city councillors have basically said the same thing that I'm saying is that I learned how to be as good as I am by watching you. And that really has had an impact on my professional life. And so in terms of the Community Preservation Act and the committee in the city, I will do everything in my power to make sure that your legacy continues and that that stays as strong as if you were the chair. This is something that's so deeply important to the community and we have you to thank for it. So I will do everything in my power to make sure that that legacy continues. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councillor? Councillor Derby?
Dan.
Salem.
We've been through it. I mean, look how glamorous this is. TVs everywhere. When you started, when I came on, you know, seven years after, it was a purple tablecloth that was made of felt on some portable tables in the White Brook Music Room.
Music room, right.
And they had VHF tapes that they used to record our meetings. And look how far we've come. And honestly, you know, it's been, it's been a pretty exciting journey, I think, for me to be along with you on this ride, to see the change that's happened in East Hampton. But really, you know, there's a bunch of things I could thank you for. There's so many things that have been said that are all amazingly true and accurate. One thing that hasn't been said though, is that you're a much better city councillor than you are a ref, I've heard. I don't know, man. That's just what I heard. That's just what I heard. I don't know. You know, that is, you know, we've always had things that we've shared, the love of basketball, the love of the city. And, you know, I was this strange 29-year-old riding my bike to White Brook and, you know, nobody knew who I was. And you just were kind and accepting and, and I would say, yeah, you're a mentor, but you're more than a mentor, because that's too, that's too narrow. You know, you were my guide on the side. You know, anytime I was near you, you were like helping me figure out the path that I should chart that was right for me, because you showed me how to do that. Like, for example, there were some times when my kids were little. I mean, I don't know if you remember, my second was born like a month after I joined the council. And so I had a newborn and a three-year-old. And I was like, how am I going to do this? And like, I saw that you can have a family and be a city councillor. And that was really powerful for me. And honestly, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you, because when I got my master's degree, they changed the schedule. So we literally changed the city council meeting so I could stay on the council. So thank you.
One of my greatest accomplishments.
Oh, yeah. You know, so I think for me, the guidance that you've been able to, you know, role model is just, is so powerful. The way that you can explain things, which has been said, but it's so true, being able to take the complex and make it into something that people can understand, but not just doing that, making sure you take the time to do it, making sure that you are explicit about making sure people understand what's happening. I think that's so important. You know, so being on this council with you for the last 20 years and seeing the change through the mayors, you know, the chiefs, the councillors, I mean, how many have we been through? It's pretty amazing. And it's going to be really hard to not have you on my side. But I know that you'll be there if I need you. So I really appreciate everything, Dan. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Councillor Kucinski?
I just wanted to clap after that, Salem. And after what so many people have said here tonight. It echoes in this building, it echoes on the walls. Dan, what you've done for the city will echo for a very, very long time, in the hearts of the people, in their minds. And in each one of the people sitting in the front row, and I think that's your family, you know, I, do you know who this is? He's been away at meetings every single night. You don't know what it's like, the children, to know, have a dad who isn't working so hard for the city. No, you don't. He's going to be home now. Dan, the city was so different in 1996, when you first ran and won election. I think of just some of the physical things that we're here or weren't here. We didn't have a high school. We didn't have a public safety complex. We didn't have a middle school, a new middle school. The boardwalk wasn't here. All of the things that you helped to bring about for this city. You're an institution. You are an institution here. Your dedication to public service. You've adapted to three different mayors. That's no easy task. There are three different mayors here and you worked well with each one. I think of the heartfelt passion with which you led the council, in all the positions, in every committee, on every task. Dedication, total dedication is what comes to my mind and really resonates here. Someone who cares from the bottom of his heart and showed it and did it and lived it. Yes, you had the fortunate opportunity to do so as a councillor. Citizens get to do this in a variety of different ways, whether they're on the council, on a board, a committee, or just helping out your neighbor. That's what builds this community. Dan, there have been 39 councillors since 1996. Only one has been there forever. And you're the one. And in a few weeks. No, we're going to, we're going to miss you so darn much. I think of the, when you say institutional knowledge, from my perspective, I joined when Salem joined the council back in, I think it was 2004, shortly, well, it was a while after Dan was here, because he's older than I, he's been here longer. Does that mean we're going to become the people who wear now the institutional knowledge? Oh my gosh. We were the young puppies. We were the ones who just were new. There were, there were a number of us, there were, I think there were six, and it was a new council. And you helped to lead the charge to educate us as to bring us, to bring us around. There were three, three folks who were experienced and, and you kind of took the lead and took us under your wing, as everyone here has said. And that's been a great help. But your knowledge of things like Robert's Rules, your knowledge of the council rules, your knowledge of the charter rules, we're going to have big shoes to fill on that, in that regard, because we could always look over and say, well, Dan, Dan knows, he's been here so long. So, Dan, you've done that from the very beginning. You helped to put East Hampton on the map. I think your legacy will be forever known in, in, in the arts world, in the theater world, and with your help to restore the Old Town Hall. I think your dedication to that project through the CPA, through the funding, through making it happen, you were going to make it happen come, no matter what happened. And I, I felt that and I think everyone here, everyone here did that commitment. On the terms of the family and the sacrifices, I just wanted to be sure everyone in the room knew just how hard it is to have a dad who's, who's a city councillor and what you, what you give up. The birthdays and pat, the anniversaries. If there's a meeting, what are you going to do? He shows up. He shows up for all the years. Thank you so much. We're going to miss you just tremendously. And I, I'm glad I, I hope you consider me your friend. Because I really, I really think that it's important to maintain that friendship and I hope we, any one of us can call on you. And I thank you for your time here, your efforts, for everything you've done.
You're welcome, JP.
Thank you. Councillor Denham?
Hard to top all of this. You know, I've been thinking a lot in the last couple of weeks about what would I want to say today. And I've been thinking a lot about espoused values and enacted values. And espoused values are those values that we say. And enacted values are the ones that we actually do, right? And the great struggle of sitting up here at this table is how to figure out how to bring those two various sets of goals together. And when you are in politics, sometimes it's challenging. When you're dealing with budget constraints, it's challenging to bring those closer together. When you're dealing with egos, it's very challenging to bring those things together, right? And I think that sometimes it's easy to bring those things together when we have self-interest, right? It's much more difficult to bring those things together when you have to think about a variety of people, a diversity of people within a community as large as, as East Hampton. And I think that one of the things that I have appreciated about watching Dan is he has tried to bring those things close together, right? And I think there's been times where we've had conversations about identity or conversations about justice. And he will say, I didn't see that. I missed that. I'm glad you said something or I'm glad someone else said something. And that is a demonstration of learning and that is a demonstration of wanting to do right by bringing those things, those values together that I say I believe in and that I actually do, right? And I act upon those. And I think that that, you know, we talk about role models, but I think that that is, you have been, you have served as a role model for this city, right? In being able to align those values, to show people how do you bring those two things together, those two sets of values together. And I think that for myself, right, and I watch that, you are the embodiment of East Hampton, right? You are East Hampton and East Hampton is you, right? You, you love this community very dearly, right? And I think that as we've seen, and I hope you've recognized, the city has loved you back. And they are appreciative of, of everything that you have done. And I know that we have talked about the CPA and, and different people have said different things, but the CPA started in 2001 and they have allocated just over $11 million. And that has been leveraged, right, against roughly $85 million in matched funds, right? That is significant. That has gone out and worked, been worked, working towards kind of the improvements that have been mentioned. But when Dan came on in, in 2016, right, he has, he has allocated and worked with the committee to allocate over $6 million, right? And that has been leveraged against matching funds that equal $35 million. So in that short amount of time, he has done almost half, right, of, of the 23 years that the CPA has, has worked together. And so I think what's important is as you bring those two sets of values together, as you put those things together, that's where you begin to develop your legacy, right? And I think that, as has been said, you know, your legacy is everywhere, right? Old Town Hall, the pond, affordable housing, all of those things that you have said you cared about, you have worked to actually make, to actualize those things. And when I think of legacy, I also think of your family here in the front row, right? How amazing it is for them, right? To be able to see you everywhere in the community, right? Your fingerprint, your handprint, your footprint of, of the things that you have cared about, it is, it is visual, it is visible, right? And there's going to come a day when, long time from now, when you're not with us and that legacy, your, your family will be able to continue to see that everywhere. And that's not something that I think the rest of us can say, right? And that's significant, right? And when you think about the schools that you've worked towards, you know, I, I realize that the schools were there for a very long time. And if these schools stay as long as those schools, many generations will, will see you and, and recognize that impact that you have had. And so I think that that's, that's significant and that's not something that anyone else, anyone else on this council can say. And so I want to thank you for your commitment to this community. I want to thank you for your openness to learning and demonstrating and modeling for this community what leaders can be. And I genuinely hope that someday you will continue to, to play golf with me and I would, I would welcome that opportunity. And so I, I thank you for everything that you've done for me and everything that you've done for this community.
Thank you. I promise, we're almost done. I think it's really important for someone in this group to talk. I think this is the only person who's been 27 years with Dan and that is our city clerk, our council clerk, Barbara.
So Dan, I wasn't going to say anything, but I feel like I, I must, because you are leaving me now. As the sole person who's been here the whole time. I, I can remember back when, you know, the first council came in and it was a big deal, you know, we had a mayor, we had a council. I had no idea, I had never heard of you before. I've never heard your name. I didn't know who you were. But I mean, I can't imagine this council without you. I'm really going to miss you. And I want to say thank you and I hope I still see your phone number, your name come up on my phone.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to try. I think everybody says so many good stuff about Dan and he deserves all the words because you're a great human being. But you know what? I have to say, say thank you to Dave, to Matt, to Megan, to Amy, to Beth, especially to Patty. Thank you. Thank you for sharing your dad and your husband with us, with the city for 27 years. He wasn't there Wednesdays. He wasn't there for CPA meeting. He wasn't there all the Wednesday because he had finance. So thank you. Thank you. Someone said that Dan is the legacy in this town. I would say your family it is. I think your family is. This city is the city that we choose, that you do too. We choose as a community, we chose this community to move in 2007. We didn't grow up here. But you know what? Thank you, Dan, because the city that you've been working for 27 years is a great city. It's a great community. So thank you for allowing people like me and my family to see Southampton as a place to live. That, that means a lot to me and to my family. I really appreciate it. And again, thank you so much. Those sacrifices that you guys did to share your dad and your husband with us, I don't know how I can describe that, because you, you guys are the heroes. Tonight is Dan night. But you know what? I disagree. I think you- I think it's the Riz family's night. Because you guys, you guys are great. So thank you. And thank you, Dan, for being a good friend. And thank you for, because without you, probably I wouldn't be in this position today. You stand up with me, holding signs, pushing for me, making calls, campaigning with me. And, uh, today, I can say that I have a friend. And, and, and to me, that's, that's from the bottom of my heart, thank you. So now, is Dan Riz. No, wait, yes, you're right. First, um.
To be last.
Yes. You see, who's gonna tell us that, right? So.
CPAG, I have lost my touch.
So to, tonight, we have to say bye for now to two councillors. We talk about Dan all the time tonight, but we have, um, Dave Munier, Consul Munier. The tonight is his last meeting. I, I just wanna say thank you. We have something for you, and the vice president's gonna read it.
Okay, so this is presented to David B. Munier in appreciation of your service on the East Hampton City Council, um, July sixth, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and it's signed Omar Gomez, City Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, everybody brings something to, to Dan, and we are no exception. We have to do something for him too, right? So we're gonna present to Dan the Riz in a, in appreciation of your twenty-seven years, just that, of service of the East Hampton City Council from nineteen ninety-six to two, two thousand twenty-three. Thank you, Dan.
For twenty-seven years, we're gonna stand here and clap.
Well, you all have to listen to me one last time.
Consul Riz.
Thank you, Consul, President Gomez. Thank you all for your kind comments. I am overwhelmingly grateful, but I was only doing what we elected officials are responsible for, namely, the health and safety of our citizens, and holding the executive accountable for taxpayers' dollars, which provide city services. My thank yous are many, and please forgive if I leave someone out. I wanna thank my wife Patty, who put up with my anxieties about going to council, who always listened when I had to deal with controversial subjects, but always listened when I felt successful. My most grateful thank yous is to the citizens of Precinct Five who elected me, is it thirteen or fourteen, Barbara?
Fourteen.
Fourteen times and trusted me with those duties. We did some improvements to the precinct, a park on Strong and Plain Street, my grandchildren use it. A new water tank that improved water pressure and improved firefighting capability in the Plains area. And we built sewers so the Plains District would no longer need septic system, protecting the aquifer below and giving the citizens of the Plains the same city service available to all the city. My work, however, would not be possible without the help of many city department heads and others, so I offer a few thank yous. DPW Director Greg Nullman always responded quickly to precinct and city questions. He is a gem of a leader for our highway sewer and water departments. Jeff Bag and Planning is a superhero when it comes to grant writing and calmly leading a planning department that is constantly growing the city, improving conditions everywhere and always finding a way to diplomatically deal with difficult neighbors on projects that require careful communication. I am also deeply grateful to Assistant Planner Jamie Webb, who administers the CPA with a calm and knowledgeable attitude, no matter how I question CPA applications. She is a star for the CPA. I am indeed thankful that the CPA Committee allowed me to lead them as chair for many years. In my opinion, the Community Preservation Act is the most impactful legislation for cities and towns in the state's history. We have used taxpayer funds to leverage millions and millions of grant dollars that improve the quality of life in our city. These funds alone have allowed our city to evolve from a sleepy, mild-town bedroom community to a desirable place to live with our rail trail, accessible open trails and parks, a boardwalk, new ball fields, and a recent grant of eight hundred thousand dollars to repair our pool, just to name a few. And we have improved our affordable housing pros, prospects, with just last Wednesday at my last meeting, granting one point one million dollars that, to that end, just this year. Thank you to the members of the CPA Committee, and we will finish Old Town Hall. I feel the work we have done here is my most satisfying success. A very big thank you to our IT department, led by Dr. Karim Komahart, who has brought our IT department to the modern age. Public safety is one of our most important duties as councillors, and I am very thankful to Chief Norris and the Fire Department for their constant vigil for our city. Chief Norris has also been so successful finding grants that add to departments' equipment needs and personal reducing overtime. I am most grateful to our Police Chief Bob Alberti, who has made his department the envy of many others in the state. He has improved department policies, improved transparency, making the department accountable for its actions. He has increased the diversity of his officers, including adding many women to the force with all-women shifts now possible. He has improved domestic assault response and constantly answered my calls for help. I feel sometimes, given my large family, that this department is my personal one.
That's a good one.
When I called, he was always there. Grateful is an understatement. Thank you, Bob. This kind of response is available always to all our citizens. It was a village that helped me raise my five beautiful children and our grandchildren. That village includes our teachers and how much they mean to our school system. We have two new schools and teachers that care. I have witnessed the graduation of four of my grandchildren from our high school and of three more in the pipeline. Our system is one of academic excellence, witness, if you will, the We the People program. That excellence is our teachers, and I thank them. I have worked with three mayors, and I can safely say that they all cared about East Hampton. Mayor Taznik and Mayor Kadjar successfully let us out of recession. But I must compliment and extend deep thanks to our current mayor, Nicole LaChapelle. If you need to find her, she's probably on City Hall on Fridays or weekends, and a sixty-hour work week is a light week for her. Her work to keep our city's finances in incredible shape is why we have high bond ratings and save millions on bonding for our new schools. With the help of an incredible finance team, Heda Patel and Jessica Hebert, I can safely say that our city is in the strongest financial position in its history, with great rainy day stabilization funds in place. This is because Nicole's conservative approach to spending leads to good end-of-year financial reports. She has also boldly attacked climate change here in East Hampton by initiating an energy efficiency drive that I see reducing our fossil fuel footprint. Mayor LaChapelle, please keep up your practical and visionary approach to your administration for the next two years. I have worked with many city councillors over the years, even if only for one term. They tried to be of service to our city. But the one constant is Barbara Lomart. For all of my twenty-seven years. Barb, without you, the council and I would be lost in the wilderness of proper process and language. You always know the right way to present an issue, write a motion, and always kept me on track. Barb, a big thank you. Public service isn't always rewarding and can easily be contentious if you let it. All of the councils I have been a part of always look to help East Hampton navigate the troubled economic and social needs of our community. I must give a thank you to the current council, who have helped me finish my work by trusting my judgment on fiscal matters. A big thank you to Consul Krasinski and Derby, who will probably break my twenty-seven-year record. Your service adds up to experience, and as I depart, that experience will be needed. My greatest thanks to our current President Omar Gomez, who works constantly keeping our council on the right track. He goes to every committee meeting and keeps himself informed of city business. If he's not at home or at a ballgame, he's at City Hall. You, sir, are a great leader, and I do hope the next council will reelect you as you have a proven track record. And I thank you. Councillors, my only advice to you is to try to be pragmatic in your approach to issues and appropriations. What will the measure before you do for East Hampton? Do not let national idealism cloud that judgment. Well, I ramble on. So in conclusion, and you're happy to hear that word. I joined the city council because I wanted to give back to myself, small city, for helping me raise a wonderful family. I can only hope that in some small way I will be remembered for moving the city forward. I watch way too many Hallmark movies.
He wrote that in here, actually.
Moving the city forward. East Hampton can be said to be a better place to live, learn, and play with my small influence. I thank you for all that, for all that celebrated Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. Yours, Daniel D. Riz, Consul, Precinct Five. Mr. President, I move we adjourn.
A motion that suggests to adjourn. Those one in favor?
Aye.
Any against? Abstention, motion passes. Thank you, Consul Riz.
You have to sign something.